This time I'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and I'll ask you to join me in prayer as we pray for cities. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity for Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is inspired by the United States of America and to do a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. We're glad to have everybody here. The next item on the agenda, after having called the meeting to order, is citizen communication and input. Now, I understand that we have a number of people who have signed up to talk about Item 7.
Yes.
And I would invite you to, rather than speak now, to speak when we call Item 7. There is a public hearing attached to Item 7 on the Shadowbrook matter, and so I would encourage you to wait and speak then. But anybody else who has any other matter they'd like to speak on, you can come forward if you've signed up.
No, ma'am. They're all for Item 7.
Right. So we'll call the list when we get to Item 7. All right, Item 1 is a proclamation proclaiming the month of February 2020 is Black History Month. I'd like to invite Lonny Davis and/or Dr. Davis to come up. I think he has a presentation before I present the proclamation.
Hi, Mayor. We'd like the kids to get it this year, so if we could, just bear with us just one second. And I'd like for them to have a little presentation for the city. So if you would, we'll kind of change it around a little bit. Is that all right?
Sure.
Okay. What we're gonna have is that, you know, me and the mayor might have something in common, that we were both born in San Benito. You didn't know that, did you? So we have, I want to call-
And we both got here at Harlingen as fast as we could, right?
Right. And you come up. So what is happening in San Benito on the 29th of February, there's a school there that was donated by a black man. His name is Joe Calandrid. And so with your sister, Mayor, by the way, and this lady here, they captured me, and they've been working me so hard, I hate to tell you how bad. So rather than give you guys an invitation, a printed invitation, I have a speaking invitation from Sandra Thompson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city commissioners. On February 29th, we will be having the grand opening of the Calandrid Colored School, it used to be Colored School, the Calandrid Black History Museum. And as Mr. Davis said, your sister and I have been working very hard on this project, and we've worn Pearl Lonny out. And so he asked me to be here today. You are invited because many of the students who attended the original colored school in San Benito, which was one of the original ones, or the original ones in the valley, attended Harlingen schools also. They started in San Benito and then they transferred over to Harlingen. And so we feel like it's part of your history also. So we would like for you to attend on February 29th, that's on a Saturday, from 10 to 4. We will be having all sorts of things, walking tours, tour of the Harlingen Cemetery, speakers, choirs, and you'll be able to see our little museum. And it is the first museum of its kind south of San Antonio. There are no other Black History museums south of San Antonio. So we are starting something new. So we hope that you will come visit us and share with us the joy that we've had doing this, and with Lonny's help and blessing, we will continue. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Most of you were with me at the dedication of the Booker T. Washington School. Mayor, I got pictures to prove it. But I didn't tell you that my first school was in San Benito at the Joe Calandrid School. I had an older cousin, and my grandmother lived at 345 Winchell Street. That's called El Hardin. You people from San Benito, that doesn't mean anything to you, but the mayor knows what that means. So that's the neighborhood I grew up in, and make it a little more familiar with the same neighborhood Freddie Fender grew up in. So I went to that school, and I remember the teacher. So what we are, not to take up all the time today, we would like for you to come, and I'm gonna have a walk-in tour of that neighborhood that morning, so you'll get to see where I was born. I was born actually at 945 Winchell Street. I would like for my wife to take over now. She has the kids. And I want to say one thing about these children, look at them closely, there's gonna be a value Victorian in these kids in Harlingen High School. Remember, Lonny said it. Thank you.
Okay, girls. These girls, as Lonny said, are A-students or AB-students. And one of them has been student of the month in math at her school many times, and so they're doing very well. They come to my math tutorial center every Saturday morning. And my husband Lonny, on Sunday, is their teacher for the Bible and history. This is Lindsay. This is Raven. This is Jalen. This is Sierra. This is Zoe. Zoe's the youngest, she's very great. And Jalen is the oldest, eighth grade girl. Stay in front of them.
Hey, black child, do you know who you are, who you really are? Do you know what you can be, what you want to be, if you try to be what you can be?
Hey, black child, do you know where you're going, where you're really going? Do you know you can learn what you want to learn, if you try to learn what you can learn?
Hey, black child, do you know you're strong, I mean really strong? Do you know you can do what you want to do, if you try to do what you can do?
Hey, black child, be what you can be, learn what you must learn.
Hey, black child, do what you can do tomorrow, and then you will know what you like.
All right. Well, come back, come back up here. Somebody's gotta, somebody's gotta accept this proclamation. Lonny, you can come up here too. Come on up. Over here, Sandy. Over here in front of us. Sandra, thank you for coming tonight to invite us to that opening of the school as a museum in San Benito. I think that's fantastic, and we always want to support our neighbors and recognize their accomplishments as well. And we know, I know, as my sister tells me, I know how hard you are and others in the community work to serve in history in San Benito, and what a passion you all have for that. So thank you. I think what you're doing there with that is just a wonderful thing, and so we're very proud, and we're proud to support it, and I'll make every effort to do that by now. And so we want to present this proclamation, which is really anticlimactic, because y'all did such a fantastic job. You did a great job, and I don't even want to read it now, because y'all did so much work. This proclamation can do on recognizing the spirit of what we want to try to do here in honoring Black History Month. But I'll read it anyway, and I hope that it will add to what we want to do next, this recognized Black History Month in February. Whereas African-American history is a very large part of American history, and since 1976, the month of February has been designated as a month for which memorable events should be recognized and celebrated. Whereas Black History Month offers a special opportunity to become more knowledgeable about Black heritage and to honor the many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas African-American Month provides a chance to pay tribute to many accomplishments of people of African-American descent who contributed to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of our city. And whereas such knowledge can strengthen the insight of all our citizens regarding the issues of human rights, the great strides that have been made in the crusade to eliminate the barriers of equality for minority groups. Whereas this month is a time to showcase, share, and celebrate the significant role of our African-American community plays in our success, our growth, and our prosperity. Now therefore, I am responsible, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, to hereby proclaim the month of February 2020 as Black History Month in Harlingen, Texas, and encourage all Harlingen residents and residents of Cameron County tonight in celebrating Black History Month. So thank you all so much for being here. One more. Item 2 is a recognition to the City of Harlingen Finance Department, the recipient of the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Robert?
Just a quick note, this is, although I wasn't here last year, I did take part in preparing the report, but it is an honor to have been recognized by the GFOA, and we're proud to represent the City of Harlingen in receiving our 33rd GFOA award.
Congratulations to our finance department. They do a fantastic job of helping our city be transparent. And so if you ever want to know about our finances and our budgets, they're all online. They're all at our City of Harlingen website, and the city continues to be recognized by this organization for the way we present this information to our citizens.
We look forward to submitting our financial report for this year as well. Thank you.
Congratulations. Next item is the presentation of the Texas Public Works Association Field Service Award to the City of Harlingen Public Works Departments for the 2019 In-House Project of the Year. Carlos Rodrigo, who's gonna-
Can you take a picture? Can you take a picture? Everybody ready? Does somebody gotta talk about this?
Myra has to plug.
I'm actually gonna talk about this tomorrow, but go ahead. Go ahead, steal my thunder, that's okay.
Well, real quick, Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. We're proud to toot our horn as a former public works director myself. I know the hard work and dedication that our staff does day in and day out, and it's always a good feeling when we get recognized by our peers, public works field, in this case in particular at the state level. As you all know or recall, we had a terrible flood event last year, June 2019. The efforts and improvements that were done at the secluded acres area that drained it, that runs parallel to it, has been recognized by the association, Texas Public Works Association, and its parent organization, which is the American Public Works Association. And so some of the staff attended the conference last, about a week ago or so, and they have a plaque that they received in recognition, and we'd like to present it to them, and like to, for you, Mayor, to post with staff for the picture.
Y'all pretend you like each other.
Oh, you mean that. This is really a fantastic recognition, and I know the city commission is very proud of this recognition for this department, for you all to have really seen a need in our community and stepped up and found a way to fix it yourselves. It's just a great testament to the work ethic and the ingenuity and the commitment that each and every one of you have to the citizens of our community. So I want to thank you, and I want to ask you, I want to shake your hands. I want you to come by, and let every one of our city commissioners shake your hand as well. So thank you very much. Just go walk by there, and each of them are gonna thank, and shake your hand, and thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I was on the phone with him at night.
So we can say it now.
Okay, Item 4 is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 4th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now that there's a motion to approve.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda, Items 5, A through F. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor. Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like, sign. I'm gonna take a couple of items out of order now. I see some healthy Harlingen people in the back, and so we're gonna go ahead and, is that item 15, consideration of possible action to approve the bylaws for the Mayor's Wellness Council of the City of Harlingen. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioner, thank you. They are, I guess if we can recognize the board, y'all could stand up. So if y'all recall, the Mayor's Wellness Council was created or formed through a resolution back in 2015, and the formation of the board was an initiative to address health and wellness for the citizens of Harlingen. And so as part of the goals of the resolution, one of them was to create the bylaws for this council. And so that's what we're presenting this evening, is the bylaws. The board has reviewed these, we've gone over them for over a year now, and so we've been kind of cleaning it up, and we sent it over to legal for review. And so we believe that we've included everything as far as the composition of the board, the terms that the board members will serve, and then, of course, their duties. And so y'all have a copy of the bylaws in front of y'all, and staff recommends approval of the bylaws.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the bylaws for the Mayor's Wellness Council?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. I want to thank, I want to thank all of the board members of the Mayor's Wellness Council for the fantastic job that you all are doing to promote health and fitness in our community. It's such an important item, and our ability to together embrace this and promote it, and to do things like the It's Time Texas Challenge. By the way, we're in first place again, with over 4 million points, and close it in on, we maybe could take the whole thing, right? But for sure, we're gonna win our division. And what a great job everybody's doing to accomplish that, the third year in a row. But it's not just the It's Time Texas Challenge, it's all the other things that we're doing in our community to try to promote health and fitness for the benefit of industry, for the benefit of our businesses, our healthcare industry, and for our local governments, all which can benefit from a healthy workforce. So thank you all again for your commitment and everything that you're doing. You all just put the packet and bag together? Was that, who put the packet together that we got, we see the bag?
Yes.
I want to thank them, because that's the first time I've ever gotten a shirt that fits. And that's the start, right? I got the gear, and I can, I don't know, who guessed my medium size, but thank you. All right. Then I'm gonna go to Item 12, which is consideration of possible action to approve a letter in support of the United States Bicycle Route 55 and 255.
I think for the motion, second.
Oh.
I made the motion.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 12, consideration of possible action to approve a letter of support of the United States Bicycle Route 55 and 255. O.L.?
Mayor, City Commissioner, Chief Manager. Last meeting, Ms. Eva Garcia presented on the duties and activities from the Caracana Trails, in that one of their duties is designating the United States Bicycle Route, which will come through the city Harlingen. And so in your packet, we did include a general map of that designation and what that meant. It would be a process that locally we would submit to the state, TechDOT, and then in turn, try to convince, ask to, to give us that designation. And so I asked Ms. Eva Garcia to come here and give a little explanation of what that really means for the city, and what is the liability on that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission. Sorry about that, I was just outside chatting. So the USBR designation, as I presented last meeting, is something that the local agencies are asking TechDOT to support to submit to ASHTO for the designation of the route. It doesn't have any liabilities or create any restrictions for the road system that is being impacted by this designation, but it does allow us to use the designation for justification, for, excuse me, improvements. So choking on some water. So, sorry about that. So I just wanted to know if there were any questions regarding the designation. At this point, we're just getting letters of support. We are still working with TechDOT on finalizing the route. The application wouldn't be submitted until later this year, and the City of Harlingen would be able to review that application prior to submission.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Is there a motion to approve a letter of support?
So moved.
Second?
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you. And then we'll go to Item 16, which is the consideration of possible action to approve a resolution in support of the Rayo del Sol Terrace Housing Community Application to the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs for 2020 competitive 9% housing tax credits for the proposed development of the-
Can I approach?
Sure.
I don't know how it works, but I was here for one purpose, but I saw this was on the agenda, so I don't know if I can speak to this or no.
Oh, this-
On item 16.
Yeah, yes, but let me finish.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, if you want to talk about Item 16, yes, you can be, I'll recognize you. Tax credits for the proposed development of the Rayo del Sol Terrace Housing Development. So we're gonna let, we're gonna, they're gonna lay it out, what the item is and what the request is, and then before any action, you can speak.
Mayor, City Council, we have with us today Jed Brown with the Brownstone Group, developer, and we have also former Mayor Connie De La Garza. They're gonna have a short presentation, but what they're asking for is a resolution in support of their housing development, some 99-unit development under the name of Rayo del Sol Terrace. They are asking for not only the resolution of support, but they're also asking for some in-kind support in the form of waiver of up to $500 in permit fees. And I think Jed, you want to make, or Connie, you want to make a presentation?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, City Commissioner. My name is Connie De La Garza, and I'm a local real estate broker, broker owner of Bonn and Realty, and I represent the Brownstone Group. The Brownstone Group is actually based in Houston, Texas, with a Laredo office. It's a family-owned group, and started by Bill Brown, an architect, and his three sons are involved with him. And I have with me today Mr. Jed Brown that runs a Laredo office. They've got about 12 apartment complexes here in the valley alone, they got two under construction, they do a first-class job. And I'd like to introduce you to Jed Brown from Laredo.
In your packet, you have a lot of the backup information. That was provided by Mr. Brown?
Good evening. Mayor Boswell, City Commissioner, City Manager. Again, my name is Jed Brown, I'm with the Brownstone Group. As Mayor pointed out, we are a full-service multifamily development company headquartered in Houston, also with offices in Laredo and Monroe, Louisiana. I live and work out of the Laredo office and have for 29 years. We employ a little over 100 people, from architects to development to construction to property management. I'm here before you today asking for your support for a 9% tax credit application that is due next Friday, the 28th. For all applicants in the 9% round to receive full support, you have to get a resolution of support from the local municipality. What we have proposed today is a 99-unit apartment development known as Rayo del Sol, located just west of the intersection of Sunshine Strip, 77, and Grimes, right behind La Michoacana Meat Market. In your packet, pages 109 and 110 show the location, and if you look at that, you can see exactly where our site is located. We've also provided a site plan in the packet. That's page 114. The full site's a little over six acres. It runs from Grimes to Austin. What we have proposed is the Austin piece of the property would be carved out, not used for the apartment site. A residential lot would be created there. The actual development itself for the apartments would front onto Grimes. There's, I believe, four or five existing apartment developments, multifamily in that area right now. We're proposing to situate one in the middle of those. There's also, part of what we would be required to do is construct a cul-de-sac. Where Bowie terminates right now, it's a dead-end street. Part of our development would be to construct a cul-de-sac, and we would plan an emergency exit out onto that street. As was pointed out, Brownstone has developed a dozen multifamily tax credit apartments throughout the valley. In the last 10 years, we've topped out over 70 multifamily apartments from here to Alabama. We do a lot here in Texas. In this particular case, Rayo del Sol would be owned and operated by Brownstone, which again is a father, three sons. So it's in our best interest to make sure the properties are kept very clean, and that the residents that live there are solid citizens. Every single community that we own, each individual that lives there has to go through a background check. We don't want anybody living there that hasn't passed a background check. And I can say, from experience, where I live in Laredo, single-family residential, you don't go through a background check. The area that I've lived, I've watched the federal government seize homes that were owned by people that were convicted of bad crimes. That doesn't happen in the communities that we run. Everybody goes through a background check. Our plan is to submit the application next Friday, bless you, provided that we're able to receive your support this evening. It's a big deal when we put these together. Applications end up being between 500 and 700 pages. They take a long time to process, and we're nearing that completion, but the key component left is y'all's support. We'd be proud to own an apartment in y'all's community. I will say, Rayo del Sol creates jobs during construction, creates taxes once complete. The retail community would love it, because they have increased business, and most importantly, we provide homes. So we ask for your support.
The application is due when, Mr. Brown? The application is due when, Mr. Brown?
It's due next Friday, the 28th.
Next Friday?
Yes, sir.
Is all your paperwork complete? You're just looking?
It all comes together over the next 10 days.
So you're going to be working overtime?
Oh, yes, sir. We've got a team, there's over a dozen of us that package it up. I couldn't begin to put together 500 to 700 pages of the application, but it.
And as with previous applications from other applicants, this does not guarantee that you get a slot from the state?
No, sir, there's no guarantee. Region 11, which starts in Del Rio and goes all the way to Brownsville, covers everything up and down. The Rio Grande is one of the most competitive regions in the state of Texas. Harlingen is in the rural component, excuse me, Harlingen is in the urban component, competing against all the urban communities, from Brownsville, Harlingen, McAllen, the major cities up and down 83, all the way to Laredo. And Harlingen needs to see more tax credits come in. I know y'all had Baxter Lofts, we're excited to see that go through for the city, hopefully in years to come. It's a great instrument to provide quality housing. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions anyone else has.
Does anybody have any other questions?
I have a question. Does that need to be rezoned, that section?
Yes, sir.
Yes, well, it would have to go through a zoning process.
It is not zoned currently?
Not for multifamily? Not for multifamily.
A portion of it is, not the entirety. Now, I wasn't asking about the portion, so you talked about the odd-shaped lot.
Can you put it on the screen? Do we have the presentation that we can put on the screen? No.
Okay.
Can we open it up on our webpage?
Yeah, I mean, he has it here.
I have it open here, but it's on the.
I just want to know what portion is zoned.
Well, what I was going to ask is, it's an odd-shaped lot, and so you have that little chunk that touches Austin? And so where are you going to draw that east-west line?
That is approximately, if it comes up, I can actually point it at a screen. That's approximately a lot and a half in width.
Yes.
At the back portion of that, where there's a straight line east and west across, that would be the dividing line between the R1 and the multifamily.
Okay, and so you're not going to, so you're not going to make the natural line there at Bowie, you're going to go all the way down to that?
That's correct. That's where the cul-de-sac would need to be constructed.
That's where the, on Bowie, right?
Yes, sir.
That's where the cul-de-sac, so you can go out, because there are apartments currently on Bowie.
There's apartments to the east on Bowie, there's apartments, well, to the north of us and to the west of us there.
Correct.
Those are actually townhomes, but I'm not sure the multifamily designation. But I know there's three apartment complexes that are north of us on.
But you would not be touching Austin, so you'll leave Austin alone?
That is correct.
Sell that office as residential.
Yes, sir, that's.
The south line will be Bowie.
Right there.
The south line will be Bowie?
No, 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 sir. The south line of R1, with your permission, I can actually walk and point it.
Pointing?
I don't know if that.
Yeah, because, okay, so Bowie would be the first jog, and then the second jog, and then the third jog.
This would be the dividing line right here. This lot that's here, which is approximately a lot and a half, which is day R1, there would be no apartment activity whatsoever here. This would be sold eventually as a multifamily residential lot. From here up is the apartment complex. Access here, a cul-de-sac to be created here.
Correct.
The apartment community would situate it here. We don't, since the civil engineer hasn't designed the ultimate layout, I can't tell you where detention would fit best and decide where the apartments would be put on. But the main access would be up here on Grimes. There's that laser pointer. There'd be an access point here, and an additional access point here, a third access point here. Cul-de-sac would be constructed here. That is the dividing line between residential R1 and then the multifamily would be constructed out here, according to the site plan.
Right.
But there's apartments.
I was wondering how you were going to do that dog leg, and that was the.
Yeah, definitely, this is the dividing line right here. This portion down here is already zoned multifamily, I have no idea how that happened. And actually, there's a part of it, I think, that doesn't even have something yet, but this, the application for the zone change follows this boundary that I'm tracing right here.
In your large rectangle to the right, what is that?
You hit the left-right arrow.
I did.
Somebody did. They're doing it behind you here. He's working behind the scene.
Yeah, so what is that property to the right of that large rectangle, north-south rectangle?
This property here.
Yes.
That's La Michoacana, the meat market.
Right, right, right.
That's the commercial strip center and mini storage apartments.
Colonial Strip Center is there, and there's some apartments there.
Seven Street, correct?
Yeah. There's a business here, apartments here, this is mini storage apartments, and apartments here.
Correct. And I believe that's where, there's an auto repair shop too.
Okay, does anybody have any other, any other questions for the developer or Mr. Delagarsa?
I'd be happy to come back if you need to.
Okay. All right. Sandra, if you want to.
Thank you. So I wasn't planning on approaching.
So, so if you would state, if you would state your name and tell us your residence address.
Thank you, okay.
And then I think we're going to give you, everybody will get two minutes.
Okay.
I think we have some other folks that want to.
Absolutely. My name is Sandra Flynn. I live at 425 Rotama Place, which is adjacent to this property, directly adjacent to this property. I'm joined here by my neighbors in that neighborhood. We are extremely opposed to this multifamily development in our neighborhood. We have plenty of multifamily developments surrounding our neighborhood, and we're trying to protect the value of our property. I know that this is not zoned multifamily, that that's the next step, but I really don't know what else to say. I don't know if our neighbors can speak to this, but it's very, very, very concerning to the folks who live in this area. We've researched this group, we know that the other developments that they've built are in low-income areas, and we're just trying to protect the investment that we have and prevent multifamily residents in that, in this area, that we are surrounded currently by multiple multifamily areas. I don't know what else to say. Thank you for letting me speak. I don't know.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to let anybody else who wants to speak for, regarding the issue.
My name is Nicole Shamlin, and I also live right across the street, which is adjacent to this property.
Just state your address.
422 Rotama Place.
Thank you.
I own almost a half acre, so I will be extremely affected by this. I would like to know if they are building for low income. I'm assuming that's why they're applying for, I guess, government loan and maybe a 9% tax deduction, is that correct? Is that why we're here?
Tax credit is a federal program.
Tax credit, right, to build low income?
To, one gets a tax credit incentive to build these types of buildings.
For low income.
Generally speaking, correct.
Right. And I'd like to know.
Or, it all depends on the federal rate of what is low income. Low income in San Francisco would be the wealthiest income in Harlingen, right? So it all depends on the geographic area. Do I have that correct?
Yeah. And I understand that they will be managing this, and I'm sure overseeing it and, you know, monitoring their tenants, but my question is, how long do they keep the property until they turn it over? Because most of these companies do build, they get the rent roll up, and then they turn around and sell it. Therefore, we wouldn't know who bought into it, who would do, you know, what they're doing as far as screening their tenants and doing what they say they're going to do. And that worries me as well. So, that's all I'd like to say.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak regarding this item? Okay, you want to give us a response?
Yes, sir. Mayor. I'll go in reverse order. The ownership is required for 15 years, so we cannot sell this asset for 15 years. And at the end of 15 years, when the 9% program gets reinstated, it's always the intention to maintain the property or the asset. So we're not turning around and selling this. This is ours to own and maintain. The first individual that spoke said they had researched us and that we only build in low-income areas. If you go to our website, you'll see over 70 developments. The majority are not in low-income areas. There are some that have been built in areas, we do it for housing authorities, that they already own the property in a lower-income area. Yes, we will build there if the housing authority asks us to do it. The properties that we buy are not in low-income areas. The last two that we've developed here, the property prices that are paid, the two most properties that we've acquired, working with the housing authority, for example, in McAllen, those properties are selling for anywhere upwards of $6 a foot and up. This year, they're paying over $10 a foot for tax credit development properties. So, to say that somebody has researched us and we only build in low-income areas, that is not a statement of fact. I'm here Jed Brown on the record saying that. Please understand that's not the case.
May I ask you, because I think that's a proper question, developments just like this not considered your other portfolio, but comparing apples to apples, how many do you retain after 15 years? Or do you do so?
We, that's a valid question. We entered the program 14 years ago, so we have two properties that are coming up in Alice in the next two to three years that we will buy back into. None of them have actually hit 15 years because the program's not that old.
Okay. Okay, there would be, so what's being requested tonight is a letter of support from the city so that you can include that in your application for the housing tax credits to be awarded by the Texas Department of Housing or Urban Development, Community Affairs. And you would, if the city commission approved the letter of support, that wouldn't guarantee that the property would be rezoned, and you recognize that.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And at that, at that time, a letter would go out to all of the residents within a 200.
Foot radius.
Foot radius of the property, and it would allow residents to register their objection as we have some resident, we have a bunch of residents here tonight on another zoning application to register their objection. And so it would, just even if the letter of support were given, you'd still have to go, you recognize you'd have to still go through a zoning process, where you might have a lot more residents come forward that would potentially be opposed to it. I just wanted to make that clear about what's happening tonight. We're not agreeing to rezone the property, that's not what was, that's not what's on the agenda. They have not gone through that process yet. This is a request that would support this tax credit development, so.
May I ask, your deadline is next Friday?
Yes, sir, our deadline for.
When do you get an answer? Is it a quick turnaround?
No, sir, the process takes all the way until the last Thursday in July, that's when the awards are made. So it takes months. What happens is the state has to review all the applications that are submitted. TDAHCA has to review all the applications that were submitted to score them out, and then all of them have to go through underwriting. And that takes them months. It doesn't take days or weeks, it takes months. So you don't find out till the end of July. And yes, sir, I understand about the zoning, and I certainly invite citizens that live in the area, if they'd like to learn more about who we are and what we do, to please visit our website, www.thebrownstonegroup.net, and look at our developments. Judge them, you can see where they say tax credit beside them on each individual page in the project gallery. They're as nice as any market rate apartment development, bless you.
Bless you.
Throughout the area. So I encourage people to go there and see what's built and know that it's done right. If you don't do it right, you've done a bad job. You have to build a nice community, and you have to manage it well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any other questions? Is there, yes, if somebody else would like to speak on the item?
I'm not from that area, I'm from the other one, but I want to just make a statement if I can. 8488 Jennifer Court.
Well, so you want to speak on item 16?
Yeah, because they both kind of somewhat relate.
Well.
As long as I'll be short.
Well, you only have two, you only have two minutes, so come to the podium and state your name and give us your address, please.
James Harden, 418 Jennifer Court, Harlingen. The only concern I have, or the big concern I have, is we have similar situations going here, where we're rezoning property in Harlingen right and left from single-family to multifamily, putting in apartment complexes all over the place. And I see neighborhoods just being surrounded by apartment complexes. Nothing against apartment complexes, some of them are very nice, some of them, but over the years, they tend to go downhill. And we're long-term people here. But it affects our land values big time, our home values big time, and when we see our neighborhood, you come into the neighborhood and 20 years later, all of a sudden, what was a clean neighborhood of single-family houses is just surrounded by multifamily houses. You drive down those streets, there's not enough parking because too many people have four cars per family where those are set up for two. The next thing you know, there's cars parked all over the streets, and it starts to look like a rundown area. And I would just like Harlingen to take a look at what they're doing here. Now, I hear this, we're just looking for a permit. These people wouldn't be looking for a permit if they didn't think there was a pretty good chance that they'd get that zoning taken, okay? I don't think so, but that's just me.
Okay.
I've been around, I've lived in a lot of different.
All right, thanks. What I was just trying, all I was trying to point out, it takes a completely different process to get you to the zoning stage. All right, is there, is there a motion to approve a resolution of support?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second? Is there a second? All right. All right, well, the motion dies for lack of a second, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Item 6 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan, One Vision, One Harlingen Thoroughfare Plan by changing the alignment of the proposed extension of Golden Bear Drive and a straight alignment to connect with Hain Drive.
Mayor City Commissioner, good evening. We have a proposal to amend the thoroughfare plan in the area of Hain Drive. And over here is BFW Wayland, over here is the Treasure Hills neighborhood. So there's a proposal to amend the thoroughfare plan in this area by the, is by an applicant that is considering purchasing the 40-acre tract. In the thoroughfare plan, it calls for Golden Bear to connect with BFW Wayland Road in a direct way through kind of diagonally like this. But for the applicant that is considering purchasing this entire 40-acre tract for residential development, he states that he will have a hard time developing the subdivision if this road connects diagonally like this. So he's proposing that the road be, go straight to Hain. So that's the proposed change to the thoroughfare plan. And this is an aerial view of the same thing. This is what's in the thoroughfare plan now, and this is the proposal. And it will dead-end here. The engineering and fire prevention departments report no objections to the proposed thoroughfare plan amendment. Staff recommends approval of the amendment to the thoroughfare plan, which is a component of the comprehensive plan. And Planning and Assembly Commission held a public hearing on this subject, and no one spoke in opposition to the amendment to the thoroughfare plan, and they recommended approval unanimously with a 3-2-0 vote.
Okay, we have on this item a public hearing. I'll go to the public hearing. Is there anyone I'd like to speak for or against this rezoning, this amendment, this request to amend the city of Harlingen's comprehensive plan? Is there anyone I'd like to speak for or against? Hearing that, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the city of Harlingen comprehensive plan, One Vision, One Harlingen Thoroughfare Plan by changing the alignment of the proposed extension of Golden Bear Drive and a straight alignment to connect Hain Drive, and ask the city attorney to read the caption, please. And ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance of the City of Harlingen Comprehensive Plan One Vision, One Harlingen, Chapter Two, Figure 2.1 Thoroughfare Plan by amending the alignment of the proposed extension of Golden Bear Drive in a state, in a straight alignment until it connects with Hayne Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance on first reading?
Second.
Any discussion? Does anybody know why it was aligned that, that way to begin with?
It would be nice-
Mayor, there, I think, I believe they're trying to make the connection to Wayland Road.
Have a connection from this street to this street.
But I think what happened there is we gave very little consideration to what it was doing to that property.
Yeah.
And I think the way that is being proposed now allows utilization of the entire property for development.
Right. It, it, yeah, I mean, it just chop, it just chops it, chops it up.
It will not affect the circulation because-
Okay.
If you live over here and you want to visit someone over here-
Any other discussion?
There's still good circulation.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Now, we'll go to item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from single-family residential R1 district to multifamily residential M2 district for Lot 1, Block 3, Shadowbrook subdivision located on the south side of East Davis Street, east of North 3rd Street. Africanist Buddy Moody.
This is the rezoning for the, for two apartments that we discussed earlier. This is at the corner of 3rd Street and Davis Avenue, and it's a triangle-shaped property. There's a drainage along the south side and along the west side. This is a survey of the property, so it's kind of, as you can see, it's long and narrow with most of the French on Davis Street. And like, like I said, I have that ditch on the south side and west side. This is the existing zoning. You have a single-family residential zoning to the south and west, and then a planned development, but it's most, it's developed mostly a single-family residential here. And then you have multifamily zoning to the east, and then patio homes zoning right here. Here's a picture from the south looking to the east, so that's this property. And then this is from the, from the north. And here's the aerial photograph. Like I mentioned, most of the development all around is single-family houses. There are a few duplexes here, and then there's apartments over here, and a retirement center, a church. The majority of the development all around is single-family residential. In the land use plan, the comprehensive plan, it calls for low-density residential for that, this whole area. We did receive a petition in opposition to the rezoning request. It's in your pocket. It is signed by more than 20% of the property owners within, within 200 feet. We go by area, so they, they reached a 30%, which means it will require a supermajority vote of, of you to, to approve any rezonings. As far as state law, since a petition was, in opposition was submitted, representing more than 20% of the surrounding area within 200 feet, a supermajority vote of, which is five votes, is required for any rezoning to take place. Staff recommends disapproval of the rezoning request since it is not compatible with the existing zonings to the north, south, and west, and is not compatible with the low-density residential designation in the comprehensive plan. As an alternative, the City Commission could consider a less intense multifamily residential designation such as R2, which is duplexes, or M1, which is triplex or five, fourplex zoning. With any rezoning obtained, the property owner could still, could split the property into two or three lots in the subsequent process, but variances may be needed.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
Go back to the thing. The, the board is, is, is proposing that, not the citizens, correct?
No, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission got, got this presentation that they could consider an alternative zoning, and that's what it is.
But not, not from the, they didn't, they didn't work this out with the citizens and the citizens are okay with it, right?
No, they, the, the citizens are, were, are still against what the, what the Planning and Zoning Commission, how they voted.
And if I read that correctly, this land is 0.59 acres.
Net, net.
Which is like, great for a single house.
One, yeah, one big house, yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, that has bordered by major roadways, which means they're going to have to have a minimum of a 20 or 25-foot setback?
If it's a single-family homes, yes.
How about a multi?
Well, yes, for anything, yes.
Still going to have 25-foot setbacks? So if it's a 90-foot wide, we subtract 50, we're up with 40 buildable?
Yeah.
It's only 90 feet wide, at the widest. Right there. 93.81 at the widest, which would leave zero when we get down to 50 feet as we're going towards the east.
There will be setbacks, so, yeah, the, the building area goes down.
Right? We will have a setback?
Yes, yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, because of the petition, you're going to require a unanimous vote of this board for it to pass?
Five, five votes.
Five votes to pass?
Correct.
So if one person says no, it's dead.
Of two.
Well, you said five.
Yeah, five votes. Well, the mayor doesn't vote, right?
Mayor does not vote.
So it would be four votes to say yes, correct?
Well, unless one of them was gone. He printed five here, I want to make sure.
It will be-
It is a four-fifths vote, supermajority?
It will be five of the-
Four of the five.
It's a four-fifths vote-
Four-fifths vote.
-of the governing body.
Correct. He said, he wrote it as five up there.
Which comes to like 4.8, so five.
Oh, really? So it has to be unanimous?
I think you counted me twice.
It has to be, it has to be all five.
It has to be all five?
You're round up.
I just want to make sure we're clear.
Yeah, we're not going by weight. You're saying, you're saying? All right.
That travel, I could put two inches on this waist, okay?
Okay, I have to conduct a public hearing now. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to speak for or against this rezoning request. Apparently, we have 17 people signed up.
Yes.
And I'm gonna let the first two or three speak. Everybody can speak if they want to. I have sort of an idea of how this is going to go, though. But in other words, I'm suggesting we may not, we may not need to hear from everybody, but we'll see.
Well, the first one we have is Chan Dahena.
Yes, sir.
So if you could just come to the podium, you, if you've signed up, we're gonna call your name. Come to the podium, please state your name and your resident's address.
Yes, sir, I have been living in Shadowbrook, moved there in 94, that was the last house.
So can you give us, can you just state your name and address for us?
My name is Chan Tenaja, I am from 2128 Shadowbrook Circle.
Thank you.
Yeah, the U shape, and I moved there in 94, that was the last house, and there was a park in the middle. And there was a green, everywhere greenery. And then we moved there, so as the thing progressed, and they built more homes, that the park is gone. Everybody living there right now are retired. We have a, no way that we walk around, but where he's talking about multifamily, that is flooded. When, when it rains, it floods, and the water, it's a drainage ditch, and it's a drainage ditch next to build the apartment, and that is, if they build anything there, there won't be any parking space, and if you park it around the road, there's no way we can drive. And Mr. Obero knows, he's, he had been there when he ran for election, he, we showed him around, because his wife works there, Veronica, and we, she has been there, and I said, this is the problem. All the people living there are retirees, over 17, all of them, yeah, but retired, retired teacher, retired, everybody. And we barely, you know, walk around, and if, if this, if they build homes and cars are parked, there's no way we can live there. It'll be very hard, it's very dangerous. The water flooded there, and there had been three, four accidents in the corner where the cars get into the ditch because the 3rd Street and then the Davis Street, and this is why, if the good place there is to build a little park and just let it grow greenery, that, you know, just looks beautiful, it'll be good for the city and good for the whole, you know, in the end, and all Davis Street and so forth.
Okay, thank you.
But he-
So you're against, you're against it?
Yeah, because you live near Austin Street, and you have been around there.
Okay, all right. Next.
We have Ricardo Solis.
Mr. Solis? If you want to-
No.
You can state, come on up, state your name and your address and-
My name is Donald Lance, I live at 321 East Flynn. I've actually been asked by many of the neighbors to speak for the whole group. Being a retired teacher, I'm used to being, a retired high school teacher, I'm used to speaking to hostile groups. Not that you ought to want. You've already noticed, we have quite a few people, if you want to raise your hand, that have come in opposition of this rezoning. We oppose the change from single-family lot to multifamily Lot 1, Block 3 of the Shadow, Shadowbrook subdivision. It was rejected unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Board on June 14, 2017. We wonder what's changed since then. The staff at that time disapproved any change of the zoning in the lot at the last meeting on February 12 because of the odd shape, which has already been talked about, and we want it to remain a low, that map's not up there, that low-density residential area, one lot, one house. No spot zoning. We don't want to add to the pressure of the traffic, the drainage, flooding problems. Instead, we want to keep the area as a single-family dwelling, much for the same reason that Sandra Flynn was up here, speaking for her neighborhood. I'll be speaking, I'm speaking to ours. So the residents of the area do oppose the change. Since that original meeting last week, we have, I have a petition of more people. We made one copy for everyone, but you want me to just leave it here on the table?
If you'd like to hand it to the city secretary? Thank you.
So at this time, we have, the petition has over 60 signatures of people. Not all of them do live in that shaded area, but many of them who will be affected by this. I want to thank all of you for your time and attention to this matter. I'll be happy to answer any questions if I can.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against the rezon, this rezoning?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, my name is Sigmund Krikowski Jr. I live on Shadowbrook Circle, 2121, adjacent to this property. I'll just hit a couple of highlights here. Getting to be redundant, at the last meeting, it was stated that that parcel was so small that it should be possibly a park. I'd like to say that there is, at this corner, there's a four-way intersection with a four-way stop signs, has been several accidents, vehicles have been in the canal. There's also two main streets, two heavily traveled alleys that the local residents use to get their homes, into their homes, garages, carports. Not to mention that there's three other alleys and another street, Jennifer Court, that dunks on to Shadowbrook Circle adjacent to this property. It has about 233 feet upside that could be used for entrance, which would be additional parking on the road, there's no sidewalks in that area. This is such a small area, you may not be able to get an ambulance, fire engine, which is the same situation that we have at Fountain View Rentals across the street. And also, this area floods quite a bit, but I'll leave this to any other resident that would like to approach that. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Okay, and we, and we do recognize that all of you would say mostly the same thing, yep.
My name's Buddy Moody. I live at 610 East Matts Avenue, the corner of 7th and Matts. Thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. My wife and I were born here in Harlingen, and still here. Of course, I went to school in Refugio, Texas, an oil town. My dad was in the oil and ranching business. I own two real estate companies here in town, one on the island and one in Montgomery, Texas. I'm like Conde de la Garza that was here, he and I have been in real estate 45 years plus. I'm actually 49. My boys played Cardinal football, we love Harlingen. We love, more partial to Cardinals. We live on the north side. Both my boys played at Sam Houston State University, and I was a football official 18 years. And again, we like Harlingen. Now, I want to go back to this triangle, this plot. Why would we want to build something that, where it floods? The survey, if you go back to the survey, I've already went over the Planning and Zoning Committee. The survey is Zone C. That's the best there is, that's non-flooding. It's on the survey stamped and approved by the surveyor. So flooding is C, if you're not aware, they've changed flooding C now to X. X is the same as C. On your new survey maps coming out, X will be a C, same thing. So I'm not going to build where it floods, and again, the survey is Flood Zone C. I live in a block of this property, I don't want to downgrade it. I was here last Wednesday, the 12th, with the Planning and Zoning Committee. They unanimous, they, I asked for an M2. They tried to compromise with me if I would do an M1, and I said, that's fine. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimous was for an M1, there was no opposed.
Okay. I'll give you another, you can have another minute.
We're gonna put a security fence around on the drainage ditch side for security purposes and to look nice. We have 91 units in Harlingen. You can look at our units over at Haverford Place, Adobe Village Apartments, we have duplexes on Monte Cristal Court, we keep them nice and neat. We've been in the business. I wish you would consider leaving it as the Planning and Zoning Committee recommended an M1. I downgrade it from an M1, M2 to M1, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Go to item, is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Okay, come forward and state your name and your address, please.
Linda Krikowski, 2121 Shadowbrook Circle. I was not prepared to talk to you, thank you very much for letting me do it. I have one comment. He made a statement that they were unopposed, which they were, but they, the Commissioners stated that there wasn't very many people here to protest against it. And the only reason we weren't there is because three-fourths of us didn't know about it. When we found out about it from a neighbor, we took the petition around, and you can see the outcome. That's all I want to say, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Alma Harsing. I live in, I'm actually representing my mom at 317 East Flynn, Harlingen. I was not going to bring this up, but since Mr. Moody did mention he does have properties on here, we did take an opportunity to look, and I hand this to the-
You can hand that to the city secretary.
This is an example of a property and how they maintain their property on Harlingen because they're in the data. There are numerous things out there that, if left as is and is done in our neighborhood, they would end up in the canal. The biggest issue with our canal is it doesn't flood because there's nothing on top of it to show that there's flooding. My mother lives on 317 East Flynn, and every time it rains, it does come this way. He's proposing putting fences that will block the water from that direction. As it is without any property on here, it floods the streets all along Williamson, every intersection, the buses have to go around, the students have issues getting around. It floods beyond Loop 77, I'm sorry, I'm nervous.
Okay, that's okay.
From Loop 49-
You're doing fine.
The canal winds through. So we're not just affecting just our neighborhood, we're affecting everybody from Loop 77 and beyond. So I'm, it's unfortunate that we couldn't have somebody go out there and see this in person, because you would understand exactly what we're talking about. I too grew up here. I've been here 50 years in that neighborhood. I know exactly. I've played in the canal. I know what it's like. I know what the issues are. So for him to sit there and say that it does not flood, it's because you're not there. And yes, I understand you live on the corner of Matt's, but you can go right and avoid all the flooding, where we have to go through the flooding, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this item? If you've already spoken, you're not going to get a chance to speak again.
I'm Ricardo Solis. I live 2124 Shadowbrook. Just two more, two items that I'm concerned about, and that is that the amount of traffic on Davis Street is quite a bit. If you've been there in the mornings, you, it's terrible. So if, if people have to park on Davis, there's a lot of students that walk through there. There's a lot of us that will walk because there's no sidewalks. So the danger would be increased by that. Also, the second item, I have seen the drainage overflow into the streets, and that was, is not a very good site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Alright. Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to Item B, which is a consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from single-family residential R1 District to multifamily residential M2 District for Lot 1, Block 3, Shadowbrook Subdivision, located at the above-described location. Call upon the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from single-family residential R1 District to triplex, quadplex residential M1 District for Lot 1, Block 3, Shadowbrook Subdivision, located on the south side of E- East Davis Street, east of North 3rd Street, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Alright, is there, is anybody have, what is, what are the wishes of the Commission? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I make the motion that we do not adopt the ordinance.
Okay. Is there a motion to...
Can I do that? Yes. I can state it to the record.
A motion not to adopt the ordinance.
Not to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. So the ordinance is not adopted, the area is not rezoned to any, to anything. And so... Alright, thank you very, thank you all very much for coming out to express your opinion on this, on this item. Item A, Public Hearing to Consider an Ordinance on First Reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 18, Section 111-509, 3, signs, by amending the sign regulations within the downtown district overlay for properties along a state highway. Javier?
This is, these are the properties that will be impacted by this ordinance amendment, which is a Harrison between Commerce and the F Street over here. Within the downtown district overlay, currently, the total area of all signs on any building face shall not exceed the amount of linear building multiplied by 1.5. So for example, a building with a total frontage of 100 feet in length is allowed 150 square feet in total size. So that's wall signs or pole signs. The proposed ordinance will increase the ratio to 3.0 only for properties along a state highway, which is Harrison Avenue. This is compatible with what is allowed in the general retail zoning district. The only difference with the general retail zoning district is that the maximum height within that area will be 30 feet as opposed to 50 feet that is allowed in the general, in the general retail district. This is, these are the properties, like I mentioned, that will be impacted by this ordinance amendment if approved. As you can see, the area is mostly developed already. And these are the maps that show...
Sir, are there any signs above the proposed limit?
Well, the sign that recently got installed is 35 feet in height.
But other than that, that one, is there...
No.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
It's a verbiage question. Want to go back to your prior slide there? Read the first line.
Within the downtown district overlay, currently, the total area of all signs on any building face...
Stop. Building what? Building face?
Correct.
That means the sign must be attached to a building?
No, no, it's...
Define that, because that's, that's the question.
Is we go by the face of, you know, what if the building is facing Harrison, what is the length of that building along Harrison? And so that's how we determine what they are allowed to...
So it doesn't matter where they hang the sign, or how it's, it can be on a, it can be on a pole or a pedestal?
It could be on a pole, it could be a wall sign. The combination of all the signs cannot exceed that ratio.
Got it. I just want, I want to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding what you were saying.
Commissioner, the area, the area of the building face is used...
The length.
For the 1.5 multiplier.
The length. The length of frontage on Harrison, in this case?
Yes.
Okay. And so the sign could be attached to the roof, as long as it doesn't exceed 30 feet in height?
Correct, yes. And as long as they don't exceed the ratio. And as long as they don't exceed the ratio.
As long as they don't exceed the ratio?
Yeah. For all, for all signs.
And, and does this circumvent our billboard ordinance? As to how many billboards, I mean, do we, we do have a billboard ordinance, do we not?
Yes, but this does not affect the billboard.
No, but my question is, is that if, if I want to put a billboard on my property, and I use that 30-foot ratio, could I put a billboard?
No.
No.
I cannot put a billboard. So we're talking about a sign to identify...
On your residential property or your commercial property?
No, no, no. I have a piece of commercial property, and I want to put a billboard on that commercial property. Or is this limited to the identifier of the business that we're hanging on? I want to make sure we're real clear.
Yeah, because like billboard companies will come and...
A billboard company can come in and put a sign on the front of my building?
Right.
And I don't want to put a sign up. I'm going to use the billboard and make an income.
No, this is only for the signs, for promoting the business.
A sign promoting the business?
Yes, that's it, yeah.
I just want to be real clear, because I see a sign that we're talking about that's been put up, but it looks like a billboard rather than looking like a business sign. And I want to make sure that we're very clear that this sign can only be used to promote that one business.
It is considered an on-premise sign, right? Have you?
Yes.
As an on-premise sign, it can only advertise the business on that property.
Okay. And, but I want, but I wanted to find the business, because if I decide to rent square, you know, have like a, an antique store where I'm, I've got booths, can I rent to the 30 boothies?
I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. I have a, I have a business. I buy a building, I put up a sign.
One of those.
And I, I divvy the store up like the antique stores do. They have a consignment-type business, where you come in and you rent a space, an eight-foot by eight-foot within the building. They are now renting from it. So do those qualify on that sign?
If that's a business in that building, yes, they could advertise. But there has, it has to be a business in that building.
So define business in that building. See, that's my, my concern is that all of a sudden...
Like here, we have the one building, and you have different suites.
I know that.
So those, the businesses that are in that suite, in those suites, will be allowed to advertise in that site.
I have a problem with that. I have a problem with that. How come? How come? I'm just wondering.
So if, in your example, so a building has three suites in it, so each sign would be limited to the frontage of each suite?
If it's, like here, you have one owner for the whole building, so we go by the ratio for the whole building, right? So whatever the length is, times, if the ordinance is approved, 3.0, right? But the different businesses will be, will be able to advertise. But they just cannot exceed the ratio.
Can I just ask a simple question? What are, what got us to this point? What are we trying to prevent? Or is there been a problem? Or what's the reasoning for that?
My understanding was, is that nobody realized that on Harrison Avenue, it was part of the overlay, and somebody wanted to put a sign up, and the sign got put up. And the sign is based on the length of the building. So let's just say the sign is 50 square feet. But they're only allowed 25 square feet because of the 1.5 ratio. So now they have a sign that's up at the three, three square feet per length ratio. My concern is, is the calls that I'm getting, is that this sign looks like a billboard today.
Okay, but, but hold on.
And so I just want to make sure, if we're going to allow a sign on Harrison, that it be a real, that it's in the breath or the spirit of the...
Okay, but, but the question is, that sign got, went through the permitting process and followed all the rules?
It was permitted, sir.
Yeah, so, so again, so it was just...
So what hap, my understanding of the process, so when we had the downtown district and the overlay district, they overlapped each other, right? They mirrored each other. Back years ago, when we changed the boundary for the downtown district, it was not, the overlay district was not changed to mirror the downtown district. And it should have been, in my opinion, should have been changed at that time. And so, so when the staff received the request for the permit for this sign, they looked at the downtown district boundaries and noticed that this area was not in the downtown district boundaries, and permitted the sign. And so it wasn't until after the fact that, and he started erecting the sign, that it came back as, you have the overlay, and the sign is still in the overlay.
So the overlay and the, that's, that's where the conflict is.
That's where the, so that's true.
And the overlay protects the area by restricting, it chokes down some of what they are able to do. So we're, we're allowing these signs by changing this ordinance.
In an effort, in an effort to find a balance here, staff came up with a recommendation to amend the sign portion of the overlay district ordinance to allow for the sign within, if you front, a state roadway. And Harrison is a state roadway. And I will, and I will tell you that a block away, just here in the corner, Eagle Glass Company, you have a much larger digital billboard. Just about two blocks away, just down the street, you have O'Reilly's that has a very large billboard similar, right on Harrison. Both of these are on Harrison. So the compromise here is that this sign, these are not cheap signs, by no means. The permit was issued for well over $150,000. And so we're trying to find a compromise.
We're not making a compromise.
We're trying to find a compromise so that, so that we can continue. Now, it is still considered an on-premise sign, and because it is still considered an on-premise sign, he can only advertise his business located on the property.
And so part of it, I mean, I, I heard about this, and so I, I intervened and said, "Why don't we just change the sign permit size just for Harrison, because it is a state highway?" But as I'm looking at this, all of a sudden, I never envisioned a pole sign sitting on this corner, and it looks like a billboard. And so I want to make sure that we, as the governing body, when we, when we make this change, that we're clear that we're not allowing a billboard, we're allowing an on-premise sign. But I want to make sure that on-premise sign is, is for the business, and that there's no way they can get around it by saying, "I'm renting to 30 renters, so I can put 30 revolving ads."
But this is because of the downtown, because we have a mutual friend that had businesses, and over, he put, they actually came and put billboards on each one of his businesses, right? And that was a clever way to make money as a business person, right?
Correct.
And we're not stopping that. This is because it's in the downtown overlay.
Well, that, and we do have a billboard.
It's in the overlay district.
For advertising, there is, a billboard company can't just come in and put a billboard. They have to get permission to put up a billboard, because it's considered a commercial enterprise. And I just want to make sure we don't get twisted around here, and all of a sudden, everybody wants to put up a neon sign and sell advertising.
This went to P&amp;Z?
No. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it was.
That's what I thought. You got to stay with me here. So it went to P&amp;Z, and it was unanimously approved.
Well, there was one Commissioner that said, "Nobody couldn't attend the meeting."
Yes, one planning Commissioner.
The Commissioners that were present...
I know that.
Unanimously approved.
Correct.
By the Commissioners.
And no one spoke in opposition.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the 3-0. I just want to make sure that we're careful in the way we're going to state this.
But currently, the ordinance prohibits the owner to advertise anything other than his own business on the sign. So that's not something that we have to address, because it already, it's already part of the existing ordinance, correct?
Yes, and we talked to Mr. Peña.
Is that a yes?
We made it clear.
Yes, yes. Javier, that's a yes, right?
That's a yes, right?
Okay.
Okay. Well, we need to go to a public hearing. I'll go to a public hearing, open a public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to speak for or against this amendment? Is there anyone? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing and go to Item B, which is a consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning Articles 18, Section 111-509, 3, signs, by amending the sign regulations within the downtown district overlay for properties along a state highway. I ask the City Attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 18, Section 111, 509, 3, signs, by amending the sign regulations within the downtown district overlay for properties along a state highway, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, Public Hearing to Consider an Ordinance on First Reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 2, Section 111-31G, amendments amending the timeframe to resubmit rezoning and special use permit applications.
Yes, the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance will require a minimum six-month waiting period before an applicant can reapply if a rezoning or special use permit application is denied by the City Commission. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. No one spoke in opposition.
Okay. Go to a public hearing, open the public hearing. Is anyone who'd like to speak for or against this amendment to the ordinance?
Kathy Sheldon, 1609 East Van Buren. I'm not real sure what this means exactly. I guess my question is, how, how long was the previous, or what, what was the timeframe for bringing it up again before? Or, this is to say, if, like what we did today, you didn't approve a zoning thing, in six months, these people can come back and do it again? Is that what this says? I'm sorry, I'm so dense, but I am.
Yeah, you can ask that, Javier. Yes.
Because right now, the applicant could apply next month, he could try it again.
In six months?
No. The way it is now, the applicant could apply again next month.
Oh, by wait?
Yes. With this amendment, he will have to wait a minimum of six months.
I was hoping for longer. That's all, thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak for or against? Any, anyone else like to speak for or against the amendment to the ordinance? Hearing no, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, consideration of possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 2, Section 111-31G, amendments, amending the timeframe to resubmit rezoning and special use permit applications. Ask the City Attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the City of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 111, zoning, Article 2, Section 111, 31G, amendments, by amending the timeframe to resubmit rezoning and special use permit applications, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 10, consideration of possible action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Cities of Brownsville, Sammletta, and Harlingen to establish a general working agreement to consolidate and coordinate their efforts and resources in the establishment of a regional consolidated plan and strategy as required by U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and set forth in 24 CFR Part 91 and authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
Mayor, Mr. Commissioner, any city that's, that receives CDBG, home, ESG, or housing rehab money is considered a participating jurisdiction and they have to comply with the HUD rule that was just mentioned and complete a consolidated plan. The plan covers a five-year period that outlines how the cities plan to comply with their primary objective of HUD, which is to benefit low to moderate income people. It has to be completed every five years. Five years ago, the City of Brownsville went out for RFPs and, and did this. It's time to do that again, and so the City of Brownsville is taking the lead again. And the MOU would allow us to participate with the City of Brownsville and Sammletta to do this. Our exposure would be about $21,000, which would be 24% of the cost of the RFP. The City of Brownsville would actually pay about 67%, and the City of Sammletta would pay 9%. So stop this recommending approval of the MOU.
Is there a motion to approve the MOU?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 11, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen Fire Department to submit a grant application available to the Office of Governor Homeland Security Grants Division under fiscal year 2021 State Homeland Security Program for the purchase of two altering vehicles, one medical and one fire hazmat. Pecan Unit Chief.
Mayor, good evening, Commissioners, Serna. The, yes, you mentioned the Harlingen Fire Department requests to submit a grant application for FY 2021 State Homeland Security Grant for two altering vehicles, a medical, fire, hazmat, Pecan Unit for response for medical hazmat in citizen-remoted areas. We've had it really hard where we've had to respond and, and it's made it very difficult for us to gain access during activation of the Harlingen Fire, excuse me, Harlingen Fire Department Regional Hazardous Material Response Team. This will require no matching funds for this grant. We recommend.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. We've covered item 12. Good item 13, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen to submit a grant application for funding in the amount of $31,170 made available to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division under fiscal year 2021 Justice Assistance Grant, fund two variable radar message board speed trailers. Chief.
Mayor, Commissioners, we're requesting to fly for this JAG grant and we're looking to get two of these speed trailers. I know we've asked for them before from some of these grants, haven't quite come through, but we think we got a better chance this time. And these ones actually have a message board on that we can use for events to help direct traffic flow or just for information.
Is there a motion to approve the grant application?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 14, consideration of possible action to authorize the mayor on behalf of the City of Harlingen Municipal Court to submit a grant application for $36,700 to the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division fiscal year 2021 Criminal Justice Program Assistant Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. This is also a JAG grant that is going to be utilized to contract additional judges to assist with the workload at the municipal court. This does not require any matching funds and will be used for contract salaries and training. And that'll be also for 2021.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, we've covered items 15 and 16, board appointments. Item 17, fiscal-
I have no, I have no answer. Thirty answers, 31.
Siri, Siri, man.
No one.
What is, what is 62 divided by 2?
None.
I appoint Lars Keim to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the board appointment.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 16, executive close session on the following items. A, Attorney Consultation pursuant to Section 5, 51.0712, Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice Pertaining to the City's Legal Responsibilities and Obligations Concerning Antonio Butler Golf Course Property. And B, pursuant to Chapter 551, Sections 551.087, 071, and 072, of the Government Code Regarding Commercial Financial Information of Business Prospect With Which the City Is Conducting Economic Development Negotiations and/or To Discuss or Deliver a Financial Other Incentives of Business Prospect Known as Project Feather and to Seek Legal Advice from the City Attorney. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to meet with our attorney on a couple of items. There are no scheduled action items after this item, so when we return, we will adjourn.